Hello everyone, welcome to the swearing in ceremony. Good evening everyone, please take your seats, we're gonna get started any minute now. Okay, it looks like we're all here, right? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Alright, thank you all for coming! Just give him a minute or two. Alright, thank you everyone! Please take your seats so we can get started. Alright, thank you once again. Thank you all very, very much for coming. We're gonna get started. This is the swearing in ceremony for re-elected council members Tom Budd and Nat Bates. So I welcome you all for this ceremony today. I do wanna start off by saying that a press release came out last week from the family of Gary Bell, saying that he will not be sworn in today and he cannot serve as he hoped to serve due to his illness. Our thoughts, our hearts, and our best wishes go out to the Bell family for a full and long-term recovery. With that, I want to once again welcome everyone here today. It is exciting to have you all here with us for this ceremony. And before we begin the program, I want to state that there will be a reception afterward in the lobby of the auditorium across the plaza with refreshments and an opportunity to chat and mingle, so please be sure to join us for this reception. And with that, please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, now we will have the invocation words of inspiration from Pastor T. Mark Gandhi of Miracle Temple Church. Pastor Gandhi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Good evening everyone. It's just a blessing to be in this attendance tonight and we're so thankful to God for this occasion. I wanted to just say that Proverbs 3 says,[220.55][220.85]"To trust in the Lord with all thy heart and lean not to your own understanding; in all your ways acknowledge him, and he will direct your paths." So it's my prayer tonight that the council members will acknowledge God and allow him to direct your paths. Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to stand before this great city and these great people of the city of Richmond. And we ask your guidance and your wisdom as they go forward in the governance of this beautiful city. We ask that you would keep them with humility as well as peace and that all the things that they do would be done with the consideration that we are all together, united we stand and divided we fall. We pray your blessings, once again, in Jesus' name we pray, amen. God bless you, thank you.
Thank you so much Pastor Gandhi. And now, we're going on to, well, first of all, let me say that this is Councilmember Jeff Ritterman's last day as a council member. So we all as city council members here want to wish Councilmember Ritterman the best in his future and we have an opportunity for each council member to say a few words at this time for Councilmember Ritterman. And we'll start with Councilmember Budd.
Thank you. You know Jeff, it's been an extraordinary privilege to work with you the past four years. You know, Richmond is both better off fiscally and better off physically because of the hard work that you've put in on the city council. And some of the things that I had the privilege of working with you personally on was all the legislation we did about tobacco. You remember, the Lung Association came in here and gave us a D minus grade or something like that and we asked them, what do we need to do to get up to an A? And you particularly grabbed hold of that, you know, I worked with you on it and within a year, we had taken Richmond from a D minus to an A and I think we're probably still among the top one or two cities in California. And that was really a great experience. And then, I think another time that I really admired your ability to work in a very difficult situation was the settlement that we forged with Chevron. You know, we went through that mediation that went on day after day after day and at the end of the day, like most mediations, nobody came out with everything they wanted, but the city of Richmond came out with $114 million. And I think a lot of our ability to craft that settlement was because of your ability to listen to people and help craft a solution. And then finally, the one initiative that I admire you for greatly, but unfortunately it wasn't, it didn't turn out as well, was the soda tax. You know, the work you did on that, month after month, the research you did, you know, there's absolutely no question about it that the facts were on your side, but the people didn't go along with it, but I think it set something in motion that is gonna sweep the United States, certainly in our lifetime. I think you started something that's not gonna stop. And, you know, as I said before, Richmond is a much healthier place than it was four years ago and I think it's largely because of your contribution to it. And then finally, every time I think of you, I think of that video on YouTube with Antoine Cloyde out there and you and me and this "Shut Up Richmond" and he's Tom Budd, you're a gangster and that kind of thing. So, you know, that will live in infamy. It doesn't exactly describe our relationship, but it was kinda fun. So again, thank you and, you know, I look forward to continuing to work with you on anything you wanna work with to make Richmond a better place or make the world a better place and I know you're gonna be doing it, so thanks so much.
Thank you. Alright, next we'll hear from Councilmember Bates.
Well, I can't say that it was a great pleasure working with you because you seem to be hesitant in voting for some of the projects that I was interested in, but that were projects that we did work together on and I appreciate your effort. One was the marijuana ordinance that you took a great degree of leadership in and I really appreciate your leadership on the Lawrence Lab acquisition. Although everybody pitched in, you took it to a different level and you did a great job. It was interesting when I was campaigning, the same time you were running. I was at the Senior Citizen Center and I walked in and it's already, several African-Americans had already voted for you. And I voted for Dr. Ritterman too. And I said, "Well, why you vote for Dr. Ritterman?" Well, he's my wife's cardiologist and he's my brother's cardiologist. So you had a tremendous amount of support from the African-American community, as you well know. And I enjoyed our relationship in terms of working on the JPA, both the waste management and the garbage area. So I wish you the very best. Now, Jeff gave me a book in terms of how to lose weight. And he said, "Now Nat, if you read this, I guarantee that you're gonna lose weight." Well, I'm about a third of the way through the book, but I tell you one thing Jeff, I'm gonna read the book, I'm gonna follow much of the advice, but I'm not gonna give up my sodas. So I wish you the very best and you and your wife and enjoy. Thank you.
Alright. Alright, next we'll hear from Councilmember Beckles.
Okay, well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Jeff, I just wanna send out big-time kudos to you. As many of you may know, Dr. Ritterman here, Jeff's made a lot of contributions, many contributions to the city of Richmond. And of the many that he brought forward, I wanna just remind us of three of those contributions that were incredibly significant to our city. Contrary to what some folks believe, the LBNL in choosing Richmond, it wasn't an automatic thing, it required a lot of work. You know, they had to consolidate a lot of their enterprise and they had to really win the attitude of their workers. But Richmond's, and at the time, Richmond's reputation, we didn't have a very good reputation in terms of people seeing us as, you know, the murder capital of the United States. Not true, but that was the perception. But now Jeff worked with our city manager, Lindsay here, and our staff and he worked very, very hard to pull together the community, to show a different side of Richmond and show that everyone in Richmond, the majority of us welcomed the LBNL. He worked relentlessly to ensure that that happened. He went to the current LBNL lab, he visited their sites, he met with their staff, he answered all the questions about Richmond and explained that Richmond had moved far from that old reputation to a progressive, an attractive, and welcoming community. And of course, you know, we know that it wasn't him of course, we all pulled together, everyone pulled together and that was what was so beautiful about that project is that, you know, every last one of us here on the dais was supportive and we were all united in that effort, the community was all united in that effort. There are many people who, such as our chief, Chief Magnus, Devon Bogan, and in doing their part to reduce crime in our city and making it just incredibly a wonderful option for them. Another one of Jeff's greatest contributions was putting together the issues that came before our city council. I really appreciate that about you Jeff. I can tell you that one of the few council members that, I can tell you that, as one of the few council members that has to get up very early in the morning to go to work, there are often times that I wish Jeff had had little shorter presentations, but he was... But they were so informative and we really, really needed to hear those. But it was Jeff who helped us to see that many of the problems we have that Richmond faces are because of inequality that exists in society as a whole. The inequality that creates bad health, bad quality of life, and more crime that affects everybody and not just the poor. And then finally, I know this was a little controversial as Councilmember Budd mentioned, but I wanna thank you Jeff for your work around the harmful effects of sugary drinks. Being on the council, you know, you see more than just people. We see the limits of what we can do locally to solve society's problems like unemployment and inequality. You know, leadership is not about following the crowd and with that, we as a city, because of your leadership, took on a leadership role in helping to reduce the obesity epidemic. Leadership is proposing solutions to real problems. And so what Jeff was challenging us to do was to actually take on something that could significantly improve the health and well-being of the most underserved population. We could reduce major child health problems and at the same time, provide better access to sports and good food and health programs and health centers. So as you all know, it failed, but I think that was a shame. But what we can't, we can argue about why it failed and there's so many reasons, but we won because as we said earlier, the nation is taking this issue on and we led in that. But one thing Jeff that's clear is that your efforts and willingness to go up against some very powerful, well-funded opposition have made the community aware of the problems of child health and the ridiculous amount of sugar in our diets, as well as many people who are now working on the different aspects of it and solving it throughout their community. So, thank you so much, it's been a pleasure working with you. Appreciate your leadership, your foresight and courage. And you know, Councilmember Bates mentioned it, but yes, I remember when we were campaigning as well, it seems like every single person, particularly in the black community, knew you. My auntie, you know, you were somebody's cardiologist, you were somebody's something and that blew my mind because I had no idea you were so popular. But anyway, I know that you have some amazing things ahead of you and we will miss you here on the dais.
Alright, and next we'll hear from Councilmember Bouzay.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and to Jeff. And everybody knows that Jeff and I are like Alabama and Notre Dame. We just don't know which one of us won. I appreciate Jeff because Jeff's attitudes are the same type of attitudes that I have. As Jeff fights for the sugar tax, I fight for the community that's underserved. Jeff won on his part in trying to get a lot of his points across and he did a good job on it. Contrary to what people believe, I respect Jeff, I really do. I respect him because, you know, he gets fired up and I can see him to fire him up and then he calls on Viv, which Viv is, Vivian is his girlfriend, who always tries to calm us both down. They even tried to bring me to the Human Relations Department, but they didn't quite make that. But, you know, Jeff, you know, I think Councilman Bates said to me once upon a time, "There's two people that you don't want on the Richmond City Council, it's a lawyer and a doctor." And he says, "'Cause both of them know everything." And I think that the fight that we had with Cybertrans, we kinda really went to it, you know, and I think your blood pressure got up and it's kinda funny because after that fight, I was in San Diego with Tom Budd last year and I was walking between both of the conferences and all of a sudden, I ran out of breath and I couldn't figure out what the problem was. And then I got back here and I started having the same problem and I mentioned to Jeff and his whole demeanor changed. It was like he went into the doctor mode, "Well wait, let me see what's wrong with you." But I just, me and me, said, "I don't need no help there." So I snuck out to Concord to have them check me out. And when they checked me out, they said, "Well, we have to do a..." What is it Jeff? Angiogram. And so they laid me on the table and the guy said, "Now, count to three." Well, I counted to one and as I counted to one, I didn't remember anything else. I wake up and here's this cardiologist sitting there and the first thing I said, "Do you know Dr. Ritterman?" He says, "Yes, and I know you and him, but I will take care of you." So, you know, it was kinda funny and, you know, I learned a lot from Jeff, especially when he moved over here. I tried to antagonize him a little bit, but he wouldn't go for that. And I kinda tried to remind him, he turned me into fair political practices, he wouldn't go for that. I wanted to talk to him about the crime because, ladies and gentlemen, I do wanna give credit and I hope Jeff would've had the opportunity to work with them. We have a new group of 65 gentlemen that meet once a week here in the council chambers called One Richmond. And these are people that had problems in the street before, who have stopped the shootings in the streets. So unbeknownst to anybody, One Richmond is the one that's really been doing the job and they're not bragging about it and they don't get paid. And I wish Jeff would've had the opportunity to work with them. So that would take care of the crime that Jeff was working with and the soda tax. Now we're back to Alabama and Notre Dame. I like what he was trying to do and I think he had good intentions. But once again, our differences are, I'm concerned about those who don't have a voice and those who don't have any money. He worked very hard on that, he did a fantastic job in trying to fight because he never quit. And that's one of the things that this council's about, never quitting. Even though people tell you that Richmond's on an increase and an upclimb and it's a great place to be here and there's just a few, Councilman Bates and I bringing jobs to the city of Richmond, but that same effort on making Richmond a better place, it is a better place. And it's a better place because Jeff Ritterman was a councilperson. And the LBNL, he worked very hard on that and I hope he stays involved with them so that he in turn can see to it that we get jobs out of that as well as we give away our community. So with that Jeff, you know, I'm really gonna kinda miss you because I don't have nobody to fight with no more. So now I won't have to speak on every issue, I won't take too much time, I just watched my time and I think Ivanka spoke longer than me, so I'm gonna be quiet 'cause Jeff said this would be my show. And I just wanna personally say thank you Jeff, appreciate you.
Alright, next is Vice Mayor Rogers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it's evident from the comments we hear that Jeff is a unifying force. And we've talked about the things he's done as a council member and I think it's important, remember that for years, decades before that, he's been doing wonderful work in the community. We actually worked back in 1985, I think it was, and we co-wrote the first anti, one of the first anti-apartheid laws that was passed to try to divest and put pressure on South Africa. And he's been working on many great issues for many, many years. We, I'd seen the movie Lincoln recently and when I saw it, there's a similarity between Lincoln and Jeff Ritterman and it's not hype, by the way. The similarity is that in today's world, we have gone away from, for the most part, the types of people we had in office back when Lincoln was there. And if you go back and look at speeches that were occurring with people like Lincoln, Washington, etc., what you see is not just people talking about soundbites and appealing to polls, but you see people who really could think deeply about the issues facing our society, try to lead people and try to crystallize these arguments in understandable terms. And that's what Lincoln did and that is what Jeff Ritterman has done. It's not just that he's voted a certain ways on issues and I agree with him on most of the votes, it's that he has made us all better. It's like Michael Jordan was a great player, not just 'cause he scored points, but he made the team better. And Jeff has made our team better. Jeff has helped us to understand some of the issues that he talks about, about income inequality, about health issues, and he's inspired us and I really appreciate that. The other, last thing I wanna mention is that we had a deal with Chevron and Jeff is somebody who certainly could not be accused of being overly friendly with Chevron. And it was an important deal, it was good for us and for Chevron, but it was also very hard, it was very controversial. And just as it took a Richard Nixon to go to China, it took a Jeff Ritterman to go to Chevron. This was extremely controversial and because of Jeff's, his record with Chevron, his just total integrity, I think he brought the council along, he brought the community along and that was a real feat. We talked about the LBNL and I think that everyone deserves credit for that one. The community pulled together, the council pulled together, we really showed what can happen when we're all working together. But if there's anybody who deserves the most credit for that really major coup and as Councilmember Beckles indicated, it was not a done deal that we were gonna get that, it is Jeff Ritterman. So Jeff, thank you so much for everything you've done, we'll miss you and my only consolation is in knowing that you're gonna go on and you're gonna do a lot of other good work as you move forward. Thank you very much.
Alright, now it's my opportunity to say a few words and I wanna thank you Jeff for your dedication, your hard work, your vision, all with your true dedication to the people of Richmond. I wanna thank you, as others have stated, for encouraging through your hard work and efforts to get LBNL to choose Richmond as its preferred site. I wanna thank you for your health initiatives, for your work on sustainability initiatives. I also wanna make note that the sugary sweet beverage tax was a great educational effort and although it did not win at the ballot, it did educate many throughout the community, many of us. I wanna thank you for your work on income inequality and for making it clear, your charts, your PowerPoint presentations, making it clear that our country is one of the most unequal countries in the industrialized world in terms of wealth inequality. That is something that you drove home again and again. I wanna thank you for your willingness to chip in and take on committee appointments, on regional committees, on city committees. I personally, who does these appointments, wanna thank you for always being willing to take seats on these committees. You would say things like, "Well sure, if I'm needed, I'll serve on that." And I really, really appreciate that, helped my job a lot. So I wanna thank you again for your vision, for your willingness to tackle the challenges that we have here, that we, the people of Richmond, have here in Richmond. Your being a part of this elected city governance was a real boost forward for us all, even with its ups and downs, you always pushed forward. You always knew that the people's work must go forward, so I thank you for that. We've weathered a lot of storms together and we've done it, we've done it to the benefit of the people of Richmond. So I know whatever challenge you take on next, you will embrace it with the same level of dedication and persistence that you have tackled this challenge as a council member in serving the people of Richmond with all of us here on the city council. So I thank you, I wish you the best, I know you will still be here in our community doing good work and so I'll look forward to continuing to work together with you. And now I have the distinct honor of presenting the Distinguished Service Award to Councilmember Ritterman. So I would like to ask Jeff for you to join me at the podium. Gotta be very careful with this here. So I'm gonna take the microphone first, this is a very delicate, wonderful plaque that we are presenting to Jeff, to Councilmember Ritterman. So for all the reasons that all the council members mentioned and for the reasons that I, from my heart, expressed and continue to feel and will continue to feel for Councilmember Ritterman, I have the distinct honor, on behalf of the council, of presenting the City of Richmond Distinguished Service Award to Councilmember Jeff Ritterman, 2009 through 2013, presented today, January 8th, 2013. Let me get this. There you go. Thank you so much, Jeff. I gotta say thank you. Right. And with that, we would like you to say some words for us.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Thank you all for being here. I know you're not all here for me. There's all kinds of festivities today. I first want to thank the Richmond community for giving me the opportunity to serve, for electing me. It's an incredible privilege and honor to be one of seven people who get to really decide on the direction that the city is going in. And so I really, really want to thank the community for giving me that opportunity. It really, really is a deep honor and a privilege, and I enjoyed it thoroughly, and I gave it my all. I think, you know, we do our very best work when we're motivated by love, and my foundation in love is my parents and my grandparents, and there's only you, Mom, left of that group, if you're listening. And almost all the credit is due to you, only the mistakes are mine. Not all the credit, some goes to Vivian, for always reminding me to try to come here as a healer, not a warrior. And there've been a lot of divisions in our city, and I think we can heal them, and that's my background, that's my whole life has been as a healer. So Vivian, you've been my very best advisor through the whole four years, and really, only the mistakes are mine. I want to thank my family. My daughter's here, Miranda. You know, it always has felt like a direct line from my mom to me, to you, to your granddaughter, my granddaughter, your daughter, Amiella. And I've spent a lot of time being a grandfather lately. That's where I was today, and that's the only thing I know that I'm doing in the future. And the mayor said something about, you know, doing it with all the gusto. Yeah, it takes a lot to take care of a seventeen-month-old. And part of what I learned through that experience, because now I've been to Habitat, and the Little Farm, and Lawrence Berkeley Labs, and Studio Grow, is how important that early childhood education is, and how important education is as a pillar for us as a community, and how there's, I see there's a lot of education people in the House, I've seen, hearing about, thank you, you know, great leadership. And during my time, three schools were gonna close, and thank God they're not, and we're rebuilding schools. But we have to really do more to that pillar, that education pillar, if we're gonna be successful in the future, you know? And even on the preschool level, because I can see that so much with my granddaughter. So I want to thank my family, my son who's not here, my Iraqi son who's in Morocco, Tim and Chalali, and Sasha who are not here, my son-in-law Jeremy, because really, for me, this has been a labor of love, and the well has been filled by these people. I want to thank my political family, the Richmond Progressive Alliance, for all the support. And I know a lot of people feel like I'm more critical of people in the organization than the people who disagree with me fundamentally, and that's probably true, because I expect a lot more. But it doesn't mean that I don't appreciate the support and all the hard work. But the stakes are so high now. I'll talk a little bit about climate change in a second, but time is no longer on our side. I'd like to thank my colleagues on the council, not only this council, the prior council. We changed the direction of the city. When I came on the council, we were gonna become a gambling place, and we didn't really have much of an idea where we were going. And now we're not becoming a gambling place, and we got Lawrence Berkeley National Labs, and all of a sudden we got green tech and clean tech and health companies coming, and we've got possibilities with the port, and a lot of, a lot of wonderful possibilities. And we've made that journey together, both all of you and others, and keep saving the buildings, Tom. I mean, that is amazing, and I don't know that there's another city that's done that. Nat, if you get skinny, you'll make me famous. I know you want to run for mayor in two years, and if you can get up there skinny and say, "Everybody in Richmond are gonna, you know, be on the right diet, we're gonna, you know, you're gonna be the poster boy for that," so I'm hoping for that still. Jevanka, I hope that the human rights work and the ban the box work and all of that is gonna expand, because that's meant so much and brought so much, and I think that, you know, that we can't emphasize enough how important it is to make our reentry people feel welcome in Richmond. So thank you for that, and keep bringing on that. Jim, I want to say that, you know, that green print has been a miracle, and, you know, I think that's gonna actually supply the transportation we're gonna need for kids to get swim lessons, and I'll come to that in a minute. So kudos. And Corky, I challenged Corky. I said, "You know, you're gonna, it's gonna be the shortest speech of your lifetime saying nice things about me." I thought he did really well. And we fought a lot, but no one has brought the issue over and over and over again of jobs in Richmond more than Corky has. And in the spirit of healing, let's take the good from all of us and go beyond what we all can do with our collective wisdom. So thank you for the nice things you said about me. You know, we make policy. That's kind of easy to do in a way, but it's not easy to carry it out. Something like eight hundred people work for this city. I'm ashamed to say that I don't know the name of the person who cleaned this room and got it ready for us, but somebody does that every night before every meeting. And usually when we thank people, we have a tendency to thank the people who get the most acknowledgement and the most credit, and I'd like to reverse that for a minute. And I'd like us to thank the people who cleaned this room and cleaned our men and women's rooms, and who provide our security, and all the myriad of things that get done to make this city work, that trim the trees, and drive the trucks, and fill the potholes, and get their 1-911 calls, and repair our computers, and on and on and on and on. So we have, you know, really incredible people in this city, and I have learned the lesson, really, being in this position of public service and what that means. And so I really like to thank the city employees, from those who are generally least acknowledged, all the way up to those who are most acknowledged. I'd like to particularly, because of my own love, my own interest, thank the people who constituted what now is a real capacity in health in the city. And now Gabino is here. Gabino, you know, you have changed the city in your own quiet way. When I came here four years ago, we had nobody who was thinking about health, and Gabino was on the ground in communities, teaching people how to understand health disparities, and he's doing it with the city's Wonder Woman, Shasha Curl. And if you don't know, you know, if you don't know what Shasha does in the city, it's anything to do with health, anything to do with the environment, and anything that's important enough that Bill assigns her to it. And I watched in awe as she conducted, as the program manager for getting Lawrence Berkeley National Labs, conducted meetings with thirty people around a table, and one person's making maps, and one person's making videos, and one person's doing geological surveys, and one person's engineering in here, there, and whatever, and all the i's got dotted, and all the t's got crossed. And a lot of people said very nice things about me with Lawrence Berkeley National Labs, and I'm really proud of the effort I put into it. But the hero of that story is Shasha Curl. It's not the only story she's hero of. You probably don't know of the amazing health effort, the Richmond Health Equity Partnership that she and Gabino and others have been doing. And I want to thank my own intern who's part of that, Meredith Lee, who's probably gonna, her work on, is gonna come to the city next year, a health and all policies ordinance, it's probably gonna be the model for the state. So they're doing amazing work in the health field. I want to thank my prior intern, David Anthony Gray, whom many of you will remember, who just did tremendous work in, for this city, and particularly worked with Mr. Goines to really understand what the economic possibilities for eighteen-to-twenty-four-year-olds in our city. I want to thank Trina Jackson, who made me feel welcome from the very first day. She kind of is responsible for the city council, and, you know, anything I ever needed and any help I ever needed, she was there, and in a delightful way. And it makes a lot of difference when you go to work in your office there, when there's that wonderful, sweet atmosphere. It's partly a sweet atmosphere because Pete, the security guard, buys her flowers every week, you know? And so I want to thank Pete also. It was an F grade we had, Tom, not a B-minus grade. It was an F grade we were gonna have for the smoking ordinances. Mayor, I want to thank you. You have changed the city. You've changed the direction of the city, and so many things are possible now, but everyone needs to understand how thin the ice is that we're skating on. It's a miracle that we're not bankrupt like any, all these other cities. It's just, I mean, we had this deficit, and it went away. It went away because the economy changed. The economy got better. Economy can get worse. So we have huge questions to answer and figure out in Richmond, and we have to figure out how to talk about them in a way that we haven't been that great about doing it up to now. We talked about Measure N, the soda tax, the unpopularity of it, the fights that it engendered. Let me just remind you all one thing. The Sunday before the Tuesday vote, an article came out that said that if a local tax like that were to pass, the health of Latino and African-American children would improve, and it would cost us less money because we'd have fewer cases of diabetes and things in the future. Okay? Still, we decided not to do it. Okay? Still, we have a problem of childhood obesity. One thing I discovered during that campaign, for eighty-six thousand dollars, we can teach every third-grade child in Richmond how to swim at the plunge. That's not a lot of money. We ought to be able to figure out how to do that. That should be something we do this year. And that doesn't include transportation costs, but I talked to Lori Reese Brown, who's doing the transportation, and she says that's something we should be able to arrange. So the other thing in the course of the soda tax that I came across was the idea of a hydration plan. We have a bicycle plan. We have a pedestrian plan. It's healthier for our kids to drink water. It just is. Whatever you want, Nat, it's okay. You drink whatever you want, it's okay. But it's healthier, a child who's overweight, who does nothing but change from soda to water, same diet, same exercise, will lose weight. So we ought to be figuring out where the water fountain should be in this town, and how to encourage that, okay? So that's something we can, that's something more we can put forward. A few more people I'd like to thank. I'd like to thank the city manager. I'd like to thank Sue Cadlec from his office, who always made it really simple and wonderful to be able to meet with the city manager, but I learned a tremendous amount from you, and I can't imagine what it must be like to try to keep this city afloat. Thank God we have you. And I think your senior staff is great. I'd like to thank Mr. Goines for all the things he's explained to me about how the city works, and really for your friendship. And I'd like to thank Leslie, and as well, I'd like to thank the city attorney, actually Bruce and Randy, because your offices have always been great. All these ordinances that get written, they get written by these lawyers, that, you know, they do all the really hard work. So I really appreciate you, and also the city clerk's office, and thank you for reminding me that my 700 form will be due. We have tremendous possibilities, and we have tremendous challenges. There's no getting away from the fact that we have a huge oil refinery in the era where fossil fuels have to be somehow phased out. That's just a reality. That's really hard to talk about. We probably get forty million dollars from Chevron a year in taxes. What happens if that's not there? Where's money gonna come from? What's gonna happen in 2050? Is crude oil gonna be refined there? Is something else gonna be refined there? Let me just tell you something very disturbing. Two degrees centigrade is the amount where, that the climate can increase, that the temperature can increase, before we're barbecued, and really, not gonna use the... can increase, before we're barbecued, and really, not gonna use the word. Okay? Two degrees. If we're at point eight, there's another point eight already in the pipeline. If we burn one-fifth of the oil, coal, and gas that we have, no tar sands, no shale, no new exploration, just what we know we have in the bank, if we burn one-fifth, we have an 80% chance of the temperature not going up more than two degrees centigrade. Well, if we can only burn one-fifth and have an 80% chance, because if, I mean, I guess you can burn a third and have a 67% chance. That's the reality. This is the truth. So if we can only burn one-fifth of the fossil fuel on Earth, and if proportionately Chevron can only burn one-fifth of its reserves, shouldn't we burn the fifth that doesn't have the sulfur? And why are we talking about all this sulfur now? And do we need a hydrogen renewal plant if we burn the cleanest fifth? And this is a discussion we need to have in this city, even though it's really impossible to have, because Obama and Brown and nobody is providing the leadership on climate change. And we, and it's my granddaughter's generation that we have to look out for. And that's just a reality. And so where are we as a city gonna be in 2050? And if we're not burning fossil fuel, what's gonna make up that $40 million? Is Cybertron gonna be running down Cutting Boulevard? These are huge, these are huge discussions that we have to have in this city. And there are huge possibilities. There are, there are possibilities for expanding the port. There's all kinds of economic interests clamoring. There's a lot of Chinese money that's looking for a home. There are a lot of really important discussions that we have to have, that these wonderful people plus one will have to decide on. And it would be really great if we would do better at applying our collective wisdom than we have in the past. Right? So that's my plea for the future. I want to thank everybody. I can't tell you what a privilege it's been. And this is where I get to actually change seats. Leaving there for the last time, so thank you for letting me serve. And let's make Richmond the place that it can be, the sustainable city that it can be, that can lead the way. We've done so much. Oh, I know I forgot to thank so many people. I wanted to just also, one shout-out to ONS, to the fellows, and to the outreach folks. There's no work in Richmond more important than your work, and I'm so grateful for you for doing it. So thank you. So thank you all. Thank you all.
Thank you so much, Jeff. It's gonna be so different here without having you sit next to me up here. But your spirit will live on at this dais and all the wonderful work that you have done, so we thank you once again. And now we're going to move on to the swearing-in part of this ceremony. And this is the administration of the oath of office and presentation of certificates of election to Nathaniel Bates and Thomas Butt.
Councilmember-elect Bates and Butt, are you ready to accept the office you've been elected to fill? If so, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support and defend
that I will
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the State of California
against all enemies
against all enemies
foreign and domestic
foreign and domestic
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
to the Constitution of the United States
to the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
that I take this obligation freely
that I take this obligation freely
without any mental reservation
without any mental reservation
or purpose of evasion
or purpose of evasion
and that I will well and faithfully
I will well and faithfully
discharge the duties
discharge the duties
upon which
upon which
I am about to enter. Congratulations.
Now we will have comments and expressions of appreciation from Councilmember Bates and Councilmember Butt. So Councilmember Bates, would you like to begin?
To the mayor, my fellow council colleagues, the city manager and his staff, the city clerk, the city attorney, and citizens of our beloved city of Richmond, California. Please allow me to express my congratulations to Councilman Thomas Butt and to Gary Bell on their reelection to the council as well. Tonight is a happy occasion and a sad occasion, in that my good friend, Gary Bell, who I served with for five years on the council from 1999 to 2004, is unable to be sworn in, as he is unfortunately fighting for recovery from a serious surgery operation. Our hearts and our prayers go out to Gary, Shelley, and the entire Bell family. And I would like for a few moments of silence with a prayer by the audience for his speedy Before I make a few comments, I would like to introduce my immediate family, who have been my strongest supporters throughout my many elections. First is my only daughter, Gail Bates Anderson. And with Gail is her family, that includes her spouse, Marion B. Anderson. My granddaughters, Rolanda and Bibi. And my grandson, who's not present, Jabbar. And my great-granddaughter, Michaela. They are both not here, but they have been with me in spirit. And my great-grandson, Jabbar, who's not here, but Rashad is here, the youngest member of the Bates clan. Next is my oldest son, Larry Bates. Also present is my youngest son, Stephen, and his spouse. I don't know if Lori made it. She had an accident. Along with my granddaughters, Shelby and Lauren. And maybe Stephen's mother-in-law and father-in-law appeared, I'm not sure. But Mr. and Mrs. Jean and Adeline Calhoun, I don't know if they're here or not. And their son, Derek, I guess they didn't make it. My other granddaughter is Kimberly. And my grandson, Iman. My sister, Anna, and Mary Martin may be here. And I don't know if the nieces, Rochelle and Tiara, are here, but they have been very supportive and worked in the campaign. This final election results indicate this was the most successful campaign in my career. And according to the city clerk, 13,592 votes was the largest number any candidate had received in the history of the city. And reviewing the precincts' results revealed that we came in first in 28, and second or third in 12 of the 51 precincts that we participated strongly in. The South Side, Flatlands, Hilltop, and North Richmond were my greatest neighborhoods of support. And I'm most humble and appreciative to each and every one of you for your vote of confidence. This was truly a unified election, where many contributed in their own ways to the overwhelming, successful reelection results. My special thanks to those who donated financially, and to the many who worked in the campaign in all sorts of ways, and especially to those who allowed us to display some 3,000 lawn and window signs in their homes and their yards. Each and every one of those efforts contributed greatly to the success of the campaign. I wish to further acknowledge the strong support of the following individuals and organizations, starting with a few elected officials that I have worked with over the years on behalf of the city of Richmond, and individuals who I admire and share a mutual respect and responsibility with. First is the United States Senator and longtime friend of some 40 years, Dianne Feinstein, who was also reelected to another six-year term. Two other longtime friends and strong supporters, U.S. Congressman George Miller, who was also reelected, and former San Francisco Mayor and the Speaker of the House of State Assembly, Willie Brown. Although not as active as in the past, the Honorable Assemblyman John and his lovely wife, Jean Knox, along with the first African-American to be elected to the Richmond City Council as a city council member, and as a mayor of a major U.S. city, and later as a Contra Costa County Judge, the Honorable George and his lovely wife, Jane Carroll, who have always been great friends and supporters, and were, again, financially and active in my campaign. My additional thanks to the several other elected officials, where time does not permit me to go into all of them, but I see John Marquez is here. He was one that supported me. Myrna Lopez and several others supported me. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the support of my colleague, Councilman Corky Better known in Japan as Corky's son. Although Corky was not a candidate in this election, he worked his heart out in support of my reelection, and I promise to do the same for him in 2014. What a amazing, strong support from the labor union organizations. Through the leadership of Jay Williams, Greg Fury, Don Gosney, and other labor leaders, our campaign captured the endorsement of every labor union. Did you hear me? Every labor union in Contra Costa County, and several in Alameda and Solana County. This is most gratifying, and it's supplemented the strong law support of my local friends and labor groups, the Richmond Police Officers Association, headed by Hector Esparza, and our Richmond Firefighters Local 188, headed by Jim Russi. We also receive support from the Richmond Latino Police Officers Association, Richmond Fire Management Group, and IFPTE Local 21 Management Employees of the City of Richmond. And when you receive support from groups that you supervise, that says a lot. And I'm very thankful to all of the employees, the management, that came out in strong support. Thanks also to Chevron USA, the Richmond Chamber of Commerce, RichPac, Council Richmond Industries, and my two printers, Richard Lumpa and Vince Cabela of Chimes and the California Apartment Association, who made significant contributions in this election. When you're running for public office, a printer is your best friend. You go in and you ask for some print to be done within 30 minutes, and they do their best to accommodate you. And both Lumpa and Vince from Chimes Printers were excellent. I also wish to thank the many businesses, and especially members of the 23rd Street Merchants Association, where I'm a member, and those businesses on 23rd Street, McDonald Avenue, and San Pablo Avenue, who supported our campaign by putting the men and women of valor, Rosa, Rico, and Juan, to place our signs in their window fronts. So that was a very strong, visible experience for our campaign. When a candidate do as well as I've did in this past election, there are so many organizations and individuals to thank, that oftentimes it's difficult to name them all. Nevertheless, I'm gonna try to be brief, and recognize some, and apologize if I miss anyone. First, I want to thank the entire members of the Galileo Club. The Galileo Club, where I'm also a paid and upstanding member, according to Luay Ailo, this Italian group has always been my strong supporters, and I appreciate them very much. And I can't say enough about a longtime baseball friend and supporter of Eddie Minosi and his beautiful wife, Jane, and their family. For those who contributed to my campaign early, it was Eddie and his great cooking crew who prepared the enjoyable and delicious Bunya Calder dinner. And if I may, let's let me take a little few seconds out for a commercial. You know, when you're watching TV, you do these commercials, and you don't go to the refrigerator and get any refreshments, but it's not gonna take that long. But I want to give a little commercial. Eddie and his group is going to be preparing a Bunya Calder Dinner fundraiser for the Silesian Boys and Girls Club, which is an outstanding group that works directly with young people. And the dinner is gonna be on Wednesday, January the 23rd, and it takes a price at only $40. Now, if you've never been to a Bunya Calder Dinner, you need to experience it. But I guarantee you, once you go through that process, you're gonna go back again. So now getting back to, on track, let me also thank Sammy and Harry and the Indian community, who came out, came forward strongly. Terry Wong and the Asian community, and Pastor Rick Sangwing and the Filipino community for their leadership and support, and Rick Alvarez, who headed up the West County Democrats, who did a great job in our support. You may have noticed I've left some very, very important people out for recognition. As an African-American candidate, I have learned over the years that all candidates, regardless of who you are, you start with a base, a foundation of support. Although I have always received wide support from the entire city, my base has always been been in the African-American community. To my knowledge, I think this election was the first time in history that all of the organizations, such as BMW headed by Lenny Washington, the Black Men and Women, Bay PAC with Lord Madden and Joe Fisher, Black American Political Action Committee, BAWPA, Black Women Organized for Political Action with Mrs. Sullivan, Kathleen, also the Richmond Ministers Alliance headed by Pastor Dana Mitchell, as well as a host of other pastors and ministers, the Richmond Men and Women of Valor, and the Richmond Men and Women of Purpose, the NBA National Brotherhood Alliance, South Side Plus One, and members of the NAACP, all joined together to support my candidacy. Oftentimes, we in the African-American community are like the Hatfields and the McCoys. But this time, we came together for the very first time in unity, and the results were evident and beautiful. During this election, a great deal of attention was directed toward my relationship with Chevron. As an elected official representing this city, I would be foolish and irresponsible not to maintain a cordial and respectful working relationship with the largest business and taxpayer in this city. According to our finance director, Mr. Goins, Chevron contributed approximately $35 million annually, or about 30% of our general fund. In addition, they contributed some $70 million to Country Costa County. In my opinion, Chevron is to Richmond what Yahoo, eBay, Microsoft, Cisco, and other corporations are to the Silicon Valley. Chevron and Richmond need each other, and we must work together on mutual problems like getting their plant back into operation as soon as possible, so they can assume a productive and safe operation, and equally important, to bring back those lost jobs and perhaps add a few in the process. Again, I do not apologize for working closely with Chevron, and as long as I sit on this council and serve this community, I will be respectful of the organization while at the same time holding them responsible and accountable for the safety of their plant and paying their fair share of taxes. Should that offend some of you, so be it. Richmond voters are intelligent and resent being classified as another Berkeley or any other city. We have our own identity, and we're damn proud of it. Richmond voters want us to get back to the basic of running this city in a professional manner without trying to tell the world how they should run their countries. No more Gaza Palestinians. If Richmond voters wanted us to deal with those international problems, they would have elected us to Congress. The voters want us to focus upon our being more professional as a council with respect for each other and stop playing favoritism. Allow us to share with my colleagues, allow me to share with my colleagues and the voters the definition of a politician versus a statesman. Politician: A seeker, a holder of public office, who is more concerned about winning favors or retaining power than about maintaining principles. Hear that? More concerned about winning favors or retaining power than about principles. A statesman: A person who exhibit great wisdom and ability in directing affairs of a government or in dealing with important public issues. As councilmembers, we need to be statespersons and not politicians as we address the needs of Richmond problems such as fixing our potholes throughout the city, installing the LED lighting to illuminate our city for safety, a more positive attitude toward the business community, and assisting them with their permits in a timely manner, and very importantly, should we be renewed interest and commitment to the port for revenue and jobs and with working with the University of California to maximize the construction of the Lawrence Livermore Laboratory. I think those are the messages the voters have sent to us, and I'm committed to responding and following their mandate. I trust those elected, as well as those currently sitting, will respond likewise in a positive manner. There's a need to concentrate on what is best for the City of Richmond irrespective of what councilmember or staff member bring forward the idea. In conclusion, the voters have expressed their choices, yet there are some who continue to be in denial and wish to challenge the recent campaign due to the amount of money spent in this election. For some of you who are new to this city and do not know the history of this city, I want to remind you that both Councilmember Tom Butts, Councilmember Gary Bell, and I have won previous elections with far less finances than what was spent this year. Richmond voters know their candidates and the issues and intelligently vote their choices regardless of how much money is spent, and that is a fact. Again, thanks to each and every one of you for participating in the electoral process, and regardless of your voting for me or not, I'm here to serve all of Richmond. And please do not hesitate to contact me should the situation occur. I apologize if I inadvertently failed to acknowledge many of my staunch supporters, and whether I call your name or not, be mindful of the fact, I appreciate your support and friendship. God bless you, your families and loved ones, as well as the City of Richmond. And again, let's keep praying for Gary's full recovery. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Bates. Councilmember Butt, you have a few words?
Thank you. I'll begin by introducing the guests I have here tonight. First, my wife Shirley. You guys can stand up if you'd like to. My oldest son Andrew. And Andrew's daughter and my granddaughter Cecilia. And we happen to have two house guests currently. One is Carolyn Belsted, who's here from Munich, Germany, currently doing an internship at Richmond Sanitary. And Felicia Thompson, stand up, who is a student at a university in Santa Fe and is in between semesters and staying with us while she's doing that. So thank you all for coming tonight. I invited more family members, but they've watched too many council meetings, and I think they just lacked the motivation somehow to... I told them it would be different, but I don't think they believed me. You know, I want to say too that I also am saddened by Gary Bell's illness that has prevented him from being able to serve, and I also hope and pray for his speedy recovery. You know, the last four years, and particularly the last two years, have probably been the most satisfying to me of the 17 years I've spent on the City Council. They've been very productive. It's been a great council to work with. It's been a great city staff to work with, and we've just accomplished so much. I'm not going to give you a list, but some of the high points are bringing LB&amp;L to Richmond, passing our general plan after something like seven years of work on it, and also, I think, successfully working with Chevron to restart their application for their renewal project and getting them a permit issued before Christmas for the repair of their August fire. And I look forward to continue working with my colleagues on the council and to continue moving Richmond forward with so many, many projects. You know, the general plan is really our roadmap for the future, and it's essentially a to-do list of things we need to pass legislation and fund in order to put that into practice. You know, as far as the campaign goes, I don't even like to think about it, but like everybody else, we couldn't have done it without the help from a lot of people, and I want to thank all the people who volunteered in our campaign, all the people who provided financial support. And interestingly, I'd like to particularly thank those who subscribe to my e-form. You know, about 95 or maybe 97% of my financial contributions came from e-form readers. So as a group, they're my biggest supporters, but you know, they're also my biggest critics. They never hesitate to tell me when I'm wrong in no uncertain terms. They offer me advice. They tell me what's going on in Richmond. They tell me what we need to do. They rat out all kinds of people who are doing things they shouldn't be doing in Richmond, and I turn them over to code enforcement, who takes care of them. And so, you know, it's a great bunch of people. They don't all like me, but they continue to subscribe to it, and I want to thank them for it. And you know, with that, I'm just going to say, let's get to work.
Thank you, Councilmember Butt. And now we have an opportunity for the rest of us to give some best wishes to re-elected Councilmembers Bates and Butt, and we'll start with Councilmember Beckles.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to begin by adding my personal best wishes to Gary Bell and his family. I believe Gary is an incredibly principled man, and he has the best in his heart for the City of Richmond, and I'm very, very sorry he's experiencing such challenging health Nat Bates. Nat and I often disagree on, I guess I'd say, most things. But I do recognize and honor what he's come to symbolize in his life. You know, the struggles, the challenges, and yet, the continued oppression of black people that we continue to face in America. I know that when Nat was growing up, African-Americans in Richmond, you know, could help build ships in an effort to help win the war, but were kept out of construction unions and could only live in a few areas in Richmond. And thanks to writers, pardon me, writers such as Shirley, oh gosh, why am I losing her name right now, but yes, that's right. Really, we were able to capture a lot of that history, and it's because of historians like her, we see the struggles that I know Nat and family members, his family members as well, and African-Americans throughout Richmond have experienced. I wrote a little bit about that in the story of the Gary family and how, you know, when they moved to Rollingwood, you know, they had crosses burned on their lawns. You know, and I know that as Nat grew up, there was the Civil Rights Movement, there was the Black Panther Party Movement, which won important changes through struggles with the help of allies. You know, one change, one change that African-Americans like Nat and Corky and me that occurred is that, you know, we were able to get elected in significant numbers as a result of these struggles and helped lead communities of diverse populations. So I admire that and honor your work for that throughout these years that you've been in office. And yet, you know, we know that the fact remains that all of us, as I mentioned, Corky, myself, and all of us in the African-American community, there still are disparities. We're still judged because of our skin tone and not the character of our content of our character, unfortunately. You know, driving while black is still very real in the United States, in Richmond. Discrimination in getting mortgages are still real, right? Discrimination in hiring is still real. Yet, we see the results in the data and everyday observation of poverty here in Richmond. Nat, you're the longest-serving member on the council, and it's because of that that he has a lifetime experience and knowledge that can be used for this next council to help people of all color and all of Richmond move forward. And I really look forward to working with you and doing just that, Nat. So thank you so much for your service.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Beckles. And we'll now hear from Councilmember Bouzay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Are we...
Hold on.
You're going to do... I was going to say, is she going to do Tom?
We want to hear from the council members, each one, and both of the re-elected council members, yeah.
All right. You want to wait?
I think I'll do it one time. Yeah. I'll just go through both of them.
Do it.
Well, Tom, it's been a pleasure working with you. You really, you bring a certain type of energy in this council that is really wonderful, your lightheartedness and so many things. But, you know, I remember when I first started getting involved in Richmond politics, I couldn't help but respect how knowledgeable he is, how knowledgeable you are, Tom. But, you know, I always thought about your love for these old buildings was sort of a, kind of weird. I was like, what, you know, that's his hobby? You know, my hobby is music and DJing. I'm like, his hobby is like looking at old buildings and fixing them up? But you know, as I moved and matured as a council member, I really, really see the importance of that. You know, I learned that, you know, I've come to see that that's an incredibly admirable hobby to have. It's an incredibly honorable way of serving those of us who live in this city. Your work to maintain our historical structures has served Richmond in so many ways, two ways in particular that I can think of. And the first way that they've been direct economic successes. You know, I look at all of the renovation of the Ford Building. I've seen how much that's brought vibrancy to that area and economic prosperity to that area, preservation of our history, I believe is how we remember our history in Richmond and preserving it. The character of the city is so incredibly important to bring in interest to our city. There are some who would continue to let our city, you know, sort of go to the wayside, but not you, Tom. You are like, I'm fixing up these buildings, I'm making sure that our shoreline is maintained and it's kept beautiful and accessible to all. So I believe that your contribution and your expertise in this area gives our city a fighting chance, Tom. I also want to mention how much I and I think most of those who watch the council meetings appreciate your e-form for the way you gather news and you state them and really helping Richmond to stay on track. And, you know, some think that I always agree with Tom, don't always agree with Tom. We have our differences as well. I remember how you, when you were talking about the marijuana debates, and I think you kind of went against me and said some things that hurt my little feelings, but you know what? I know that you're a good guy, Tom. I know you mean well, and you're all about community, and so I truly appreciate the heart and the effort and the hard work. I'm really amazed at how, where do you get the energy? When I get to be your age, Tom, I want to have the energy to write these long e-forums. Your age, listen to me, right? Like I'm 25. But Tom, I do appreciate it. It's amazing how much time that you really put into your e-forums and informing us and keeping us informed and enlightened in Richmond. So it's an incredible pleasure serving with you, and congratulations to both you and Councilmember Bates on your reelection.
All right. All right. And now we go to Councilmember Bouzay.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and to the community. I think I'm going to start out with Councilperson Tom Butts. My, my, my. Let me just say it this way. Tom Butts... No, let me do it the other way. Shirley Butts, the brains of the... Shirley Butt, the brains of, of the Butt family. Tom Butt, who follows what Shirley tells him to do. Andrew, who runs the business while Tom sits on the e-form and messes with people. And his granddaughters, which can stop, only person can stop him from being on that e-form. You know, I, I, I have to say this, and, and I'm sincere about this. I don't think that I've ever been any closer to any person in my life than I was with Tom Butt in the thirty years we've been together. I remember when Tom and I were down on Eighteenth Street when the corporation yard was pouring diesel fuel in a neighbor's house and trying to say they had nothing to do with it, and you could see the trail of it. We put Everett Jenkins, the city attorney, in that old raggedy BMW of his, and we rode around town. And Tom was just a guy trying to, to make a few dollars. And then he had a very, very, very intelligent son who grew up and passed all the things he was supposed to pass in school and took over interactive resources and has done a wonderful job. Gave Tom the opportunity to work with me. Now, let me tell you about Tom. Because Tom has Tom's way of doing things. And if you tend to disagree with Tom, the first thing Tom will say when you get mad to him, at him, and I've said it to him many times, said, "Tom, why did you do this to that person?" And his word was, "Well, Corky, don't worry about it. He'll get over it." Well, and if you know Tom, those are his favorite words. The, the, the smoothing person in that family is Shirley Butt, and it's just an honor to always know Shirley Butt. Tom has brought a lot of things to the city of Richmond, such as the Point Richmond Music Festival along with, actually, let me take that back. He didn't do that. Andrew Butt did that. And, and Tom just stood around and took the credit for it. Tom likes to be a historian, and Tom wants to go down in history as Mr. Richmond. He put together national parks, Tom's thing. He put together the Rosie the Riveter Trust. He's involved with that. He owns half of Point Richmond. He used to own the Hotel Mac. And he also did the, I think they call it the Bulkhead in the Richmond Plunge. He saw to it that was redone. And Tom has done quite a few things on this council. And I have a lot of respect for Tom. But, just like a marriage, sometimes people have differences in opinion. And the only thing that I want from Councilman Tom Butt is to share with the south side of town the same thing that's happened in Point Richmond and the areas that he works because of his intelligence. Tom and I have, have gone to the Sustainable Cities Conference. Tom introduced me to that. And you know, ladies and gentlemen, something I learned, if you're uneducated, you have nobody to blame but yourself because you should be educated on what happens within your city. And as I go through those conferences, I see what they do in other cities and other communities that I'm trying to get Tom to do here. Just as we do a bike lane here, I'd like to see businesses on the south side of town, which would create jobs. Tom's capable of getting that done. And working with Tom, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna say to you and everybody, as you know, Tom loves to blast me on his email, and I don't get a chance to rebut what he's saying because Tom says, "That's my email. You don't like it, don't read it." And I understand that. But I really want him to get over it so we can tend to work together for all of Richmond, who we represent, all of Richmond. The problem with Tom, him and I have the same kind of attitudes. The only thing is, if Corky Bouzay was throwing his books and papers off the desk when Tom wasn't getting his historical buildings redone, I'd probably be ran off this council. But Tom has brought a lot to the city of Richmond. And, and the Butt family, regardless of my politics, I just, I, I really appreciate being a friend of the Butt family. And if Andrew was a little younger, Tom would probably give him a spanking for playing with me. But Andrew and I are still the best of buddies, and we seem to work together very well, which Tom and I will eventually. So for, for the things with Tom, I just really enjoyed working with Tom all those thirty years. But when you get on the council, you learn stuff that happens in the back room that, you know, you kind of rub your wrong. So I'm trying to ask Tom to figure out how him and I can work together to make these things happen and happen for the whole community. The, the same thing is with the Bay Trail. I mean, the Bay Trail's one of the most beautiful things out there. Bruce and, and Tom really worked hard on that. And it's like the Mechanics Bank. I don't know if a lot of people you know, but Tom could not get Mechanics Bank in Point Richmond. He could not get it done. Councilman Bates and Councilman Griffin in the old city council chamber said, "I don't care. Bulldoze it down next week." Tom was livid. He called me up, and I kind of talked to them, and Bates and Griffin said, "Well, I don't care. You get that thing moved." And we did get it moved, and it was moved down to Point Richmond and take a look at it today. And he talked about that because it was a reading room, and that's what he shared with me. This was a reading room that railroad guys used to be able to go to and check out their library books. So I hope that, you know, the little idiosyncrasies that we deal with are put away down the road, and we act as professionals and move forward and continue to move this city forward. And I'm gonna make my best effort to try to see that happen. I want to make sure Jeff Riddeman's heart beats a little faster when Tom and I are working together. Now, for the king of Richmond, ladies and gentlemen, all I can do is stand up and bow for the longest-serving city councilperson in the city of Richmond, Councilman Nat Bates. And I want to thank you for that. Because you know, when you're African-American, people never know the milestones that you have traveled over. Nat Bates is the first of everything. I see a Charles Ramsey, but Nat made you too. Because before you were on the school board, you went to Nat for help. So that's one of the things he did for you. So, you know, Nat is the longest, longest-serving councilperson ever in the history of the city of Richmond. And Nat is the only councilperson who has received more votes than anybody in the history of the city of Richmond. And I predict that Nat will be the oldest-serving person on the Richmond City Council and probably the mayor of that age. Because Nat Bates has what it takes to make things happen. We have a thing, a saying in the African-American community that we can't get along, we have problems getting along, not with Nat. I give Nat his respect because Nat has experience. And if you think you know more than the person that traveled the road before you, you will perish on that road. My dad used to say, "Sometimes you have to listen to learn." And Nat gives good advice. And if you look at the last election, when everybody said Nat could not win, evidently a lot of people thought Nat brought a lot to this city of Richmond. In China, in China, they have Nat in the museum and his wife in China. And Nat is like a walking goddess when, when he is in China. They have pictures of him. I didn't even know it was the same Nat. Looked like Wilt Chamberlain over there. You know? And everybody bowed down to him, and I go, "Hey, Nat, what's going on? Don't worry about it. Your time is gonna come." So, you know, Nat sat there with those mayors. We went to Mayor Amari's house. How old was Mayor Amari? Hundred and two? Is that, how old was he, Nat, when we went there? Hundred and?
One oh two.
One oh two. Hundred and two years old, but he remembered Nat Bates. And so this is the kind of diplomat we want coming out of the city of Richmond. This is the kind of gentleman that I want to follow. And so all you people out there say, "Oh, Corky, you're supposed to be elected a person. You want to follow somebody?" Yeah. Because I want to learn to make me better. Because anybody who thinks they know everything actually knows exactly nothing. And so I want to say to you, Nat, I don't think anybody's ever gonna break your records that you've put out there. And I am going to definitely continue to work with you. Because you know, when I got on this council, ladies and gentlemen, all of a sudden it was about jobs. My question was, what happened for the last thirty years when it came to jobs for Richmond people? But this whole council now is dealing with jobs for Richmond people. We're just not letting people come in and take over our city and not give jobs to our community. Nat is leading that. And when I asked Nat about fixing the south side of town, he said, "Where do we start? When do we start? And how do we get it done? Matter of fact, I know somebody that can help us." And all those stories you hear about Nat, Dianne Feinstein, and all these big people, it's true. It's true. Nat does, he does know those people. In Washington DC, he does know those people. So I just hope that, you know, people will not look at Nat and myself as adversaries or, excuse me, as, as, as just troublemakers. Let's move it there. And we're not troublemakers. We just want the same thing for everybody that a select few in the city of Richmond have always been able to benefit from. And if I could bring the intelligence and the wisdom that Tom Butt has onboard, we would be an unbeatable city. Nobody would be able to beat us. Tom used to go around and say, "You know, that doggone Corky knows more about Richmond city government than anybody." No, I don't. Tom knows more about the inside workings than I do. But you know what? Tom's teaching me to. Tom, to you, I hope that we can work together. I hope that you, Nat, myself, Jevonka, the mayor, and Jim Rogers, we come together because you know what? This city is moving forward, not because of a few. You always say, "A few." Sorry, Charlie. It's this whole group that has moved the city forward. And, and, and let me say something to you, ladies and gentlemen, because you got to hear this. It's very, very important. A group of young African-American and older African-American people who created a lot of the problems within the city, by their own admission, came together under the direction of Councilman Bates and myself to stop the violence in the city of Richmond. They don't get one dime. And Nat Bates paid for all those T-shirts that you see say, "One Richmond." Nat Bates came onboard for us taking those young people to the Raider Games. Nat Bates sits in the meetings when we are in there, when a shooting takes place, and you never hear what we're doing because we never wave a flag and we never tell you. And none of us got one dime for it. And I want to give the credit also to Lori Reese Brown, who has been a part of that too. And Nat Bates, it's an honor to know you. It's an honor to come behind you. And it's, it's an honor to learn from you. And I will always be beholden to you as my senior councilperson. And thank you very much.
With that, we go to Vice Mayor Rogers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I think as I congratulate Tom and Nat tonight, I just do want to take a second to second the comments people have made about Gary Bell. Gary actually sat right next to me a number of years ago. He's a class act. Even people who disagree with him on a political level are unanimous about his integrity, his caring for the city of Richmond. He's a winner. He's a winner in, he's a winner in his sports career, his business career, political career. And we're just all hoping that he gets better for, for his family and, and for his family in the city of Richmond. When we talk about Tom Butt and Nat Bates, there's obviously some, some differences in terms of how they see a lot of issues. And I think that Richmond has made some remarkable gains in the last few years. And I think it's partly because this council is diverse. This council is not one which is only people representing one philosophical viewpoint. There's different philosophical viewpoints. There's different ways in which people in the council contribute. Nat Bates is the best person I've ever seen in politics at dealing with the day-to-day nuts and bolts issues. And you heard his, his speech earlier where he talked about his, his campaign supporters. You could see the thoroughness and attention to detail. Well, Nat is like that every meeting, every Tuesday. Nat's the person who has the encyclopedic knowledge of the city of Richmond and is bringing issues, not so much the big theoretical things, but the on-the-ground, block by block, neighborhood by neighborhood, and he brings that to the table. And I thank you for that, Nat. It's very important. And it's not something that gets a lot of headlines, a lot of limelight, but a lot of problems get solved because Nat does bring them to people's attention. We have had successes in Richmond. We have moved the tragically unacceptable homicide rate down significantly. We brought in LBNL. We saved the schools. We have a much better working relationship with the school board. And I saw board members Ramsey and Cronenberg here earlier. We have brought in the ONS, which is one part of the reduction in the crime. We recently especially have been getting businesses that are not bringing in dozens of jobs, but in fact, that are bringing in jobs to Richmond in, in the hundreds of jobs. And, and I think again, that for that kind of success, there has to be a council which reflects the diversity of Richmond. And I think we have that. And I think that, that Tom and Nat, in their, in their own ways, both exemplify that. When Corky was talking about the marriage with him and Tom, and I guess maybe a marriage counselor is in order, and I know that Vivian's in the counseling field, and now she'll have one more time, maybe, maybe she could, you know, do, do a little work here. I want to say about Tom, Tom is, I, I just want to ask you, how, how many other people do you know, when you read something and you have this very complicated technical issue, and somebody's been up working on it for about seven or eight hours, and they finish it at three AM in the morning, they send it out on the e-form, or if it's internal stuff, they send it out to us. So that's, that's what Tom Butt is about. Yeah, Tom, Tom does get mad about things. He throws his, back in the old council chambers, when, when there used to be a drop of about fifteen feet down from the dais down to the floor, and he threw his whole packet down one time. I told my son Eli about that, and he said, "Dad, I really wish, really wish I'd, I'd been there." I said, "Okay, just keep watching. Maybe Tom will do it again." Except actually can't because as you can see, this dais is just a few feet above the, the floor here. But I, I have the utmost respect for Tom's intelligence, Tom's ability. And when there are things that can be done, whether it's in whatever part of the city it is, whether it's the south side or Point Richmond or wherever it is, Tom is on it. Just one example, I don't even know if it made the papers, but we had a problem because we had a bunch of pipelines and we weren't getting franchise fees. Well, there's a lot of people who just, including me, who just missed that for years. Well, who caught it? Well, Tom Butt did. And he caught it. He brought the issue forward. And so now we're getting payment for the pipes that go underground in our city. Again, not, not headline-making stuff, but just one of many issues that Tom works on. So, so with that, I really appreciate in different ways what Nat and Tom bring to the table. I congratulate them on, on their election, and I look forward to working with them for the next years. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. I'd like to say a few words myself, and I want to start with Councilmember Bates. And I want to start out by saying, while I know that we don't always agree on everything, I appreciate your commitment to serve. I appreciate that, your history in the city of Richmond. And I actually look forward to us trying to, to, even when we disagree, to put out our positions to the benefit of the people of Richmond, to put out those positions respectfully and find common ground when possible. And when not, to have those different positions be put out there. Because it's, it's often, it's often to the benefit of the people of Richmond to see what, what offerings are there, and sometimes whole new ideas come out as a result of different points of view. So I thank you for your service, and I look forward to serving with you going forward. Councilmember Butt, I, I have had the privilege of working closely with you since I've been on this council as a council member and, and as mayor. And I can honestly say it's been a pleasure to coordinate efforts on so many issues of the people of Richmond, from sustainability issues to health and environmental issues to issues of historic preservation. You, you have enlightened me on so many things in the regard, in regard to the historic preservation and green building efforts through your architectural knowledge. So I, I would also like to say that it's, I, I think you're, you're one of the hardest working people in this city for both- in this city for both, for the, as an elected official. I think I see not only your efforts in terms of research and detail and policy work, but in terms of your e-Forum and making people know about the many, many wonderful events and issues and defining those issues for the public that your e-Forum provides. So, I thank you for your hard work. I also admire in you that you stick to, stick to what you believe in and sometimes turn things completely around, like with the Riggers Loft, which had various ups and downs, and you turned it around to the point that it's now, you know, being renovated in a very profound way. But also, that you turn your thinking around at times, like with the casino issue. So, I see in you that flexibility and stick-to-it-ness that is really admirable. So, with that, I just want to say to you both, I look forward to continuing to serve with you amid this council, and I look forward to us all working together in a respectful way, trying to not always agree, because everyone should stand for what they believe in, but to try and respectfully bring forward differences when they arise and whenever possible to find that common ground. So, with that, I think we have finished the expression.
Before you go forward, I forgot to say something about Gary Bell's family, and I really apologize. And to the Bell family, if you're looking on, my speediest wish is for Gary to recover as quickly as possible. My heart goes out to the family. I've known Gary for a long time. I knew Gary when he first got elected to the Richmond City Council, and I have known Gary since. And I just want to say to you, all my prayers and the people that I know that pray, and everybody don't know how to pray, please pray for Gary Bell, because Gary Bell was a very class act person, and I think he would have made an excellent city councilperson in bridging the gap here. So, thank you, Madam Mayor, for allowing me to say that.
Of course. All right, so, this brings us to the close of this ceremony. I want to encourage everyone to take a walk across the plaza to the auditorium for some refreshments and to mingle with one another, and the councilmembers will be there and staff.
Roll call.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Before we adjourn this meeting, the city clerk will do the ceremonial roll call with the council as it currently exists.
Councilmember Butt.
Here.
Councilmember Bates.
Present.
Councilmember Rogers.
Present.
Councilmember Buzey.
Present.
Mayor McLaughlin.
Here. All right, all right. With that, this meeting is adjourned with best wishes for a full recovery to Gary Bell and best wishes to his family in this hard, difficult time.
That was happening.
The meeting is adjourned.